He was. It's not bad. He could still come before us.
The owner has.
Doug, I'm gonna do minutes on today. We should die.
Not a bad looking.
Good old.
Okay, folks, it's 5:30. Call to order, the Ballistics and City Council Work Session for Monday, December the 12th. Thanks to the Planning Commission for clearing out the time so we can do this. Again, I'm going to ask for your indulgence as I skip around a bit because there's some staff members here who I'm sure want to get home. So let's go to Resolution G first, if you would please. That's the city budget. We had a special budget session last week. Kim is here to answer any of your questions that you may have developed by scanning the budget in depth over the weekend. Any questions at all for Kim? Okay. So we'll move along. No. So we'll move along to I, which is amending the budget to appropriate various grant revenues to capital projects. Kim?
Okay, so in your package, there was a proposal. This is a slightly updated. We've added 1,600 additional dollars on it, so it's not very.
You're talking budget?
We're talking Mercy Way.
Mercy Way, okay, good.
This is the grant. You guys have seen this grant. I know Doug is out. Emily is probably online somewhere, but this is a formality. We have done this before. We just combined it with something else. So basically, all this is telling you is that our total expenditures for this grant is approximately 3.8 million and our total revenues is approximately 3.8 million for Are there any questions? It is just a formality that we're going to modify the budget for these two amounts so that we can recognize the grant revenue and the grant expenditures.
Doug?
No, no questions.
No.
Nice try.
I don't like the way it went up that fast. Go ahead.
So this is my question, is total revenue 3.862 million and expenditures 3.802.
Right.
So.
There's a tiny difference.
It's a timing. Now, if the grant ends up being for greater than the expense, what happens to be greater than?
We would have to come back to you and tell you that it's going to be over budget. This budget, I'm sorry, this grant should not be over budget at all. In the end of, at the end of the story, you know, at the end of the project, it should not be over budget because it's 80%.
It's 80/20.
It's 80% funded by Tech Dot, I'm sorry, oops, R dot, and 20% funded by the Walton Family Foundation. So we should not be out of pocket. The difference to those numbers is just a timing difference. We have a little revenue coming in from some expenditures from last year, right? And again, these are estimates. These are assuming that these revenues and these expenditures will get here before we close the year, but we're expecting them. Right now, right now, we can tell that we have a high confidence level, you know, somewhere between 80 and 90%, that we should hit these numbers for the year. That's why we held it till December and did an estimate to see where we were going to be.
Okay, so what happens with this? If you remember, just to refresh your memory, most of this is all grants, and they're grants that come through regional planning. In fact, John and I were at regional planning last week, and they showed that there's yet another new one for 360,000 that's been approved for this because, you may remember, there was a cost to move the electric lines after Cooper decided they didn't want lines in front of their property. We had to run them across the street and back again. And so we applied and we got money for that and more to cover it. Typically, the Fed grants are 80/20, and it's 80% Feds, it's 20% us. The Waltons are contributing to the 20%, but primarily, they gave money for this project as well as extending the Razorback Greenway on the connector, the Metfield Connector, all in one lump sum. So this is what we have received so far from the Waltons towards the bridge because there's going to be a bike lane on the north side, and they're paying for that. So, little convoluted, but the key thing is that it's 80/20 with the Feds coming through regional planning, and it's set up like a lot of the STPs, which is you pay first and then you apply and you get the money later. So we're fine. This is about half the total estimate.
Doug's not here and.
Taylor, it's still 7.1 on the bridge?
I believe so. I haven't heard anything different.
Okay. So 7.1 million, they are, and of course, we paid some stuff in '21 as well.
Right.
They're still on target to finish it in July of next year, which is better than the R dot ones over on 340, which seem to go on forever and ever.
Well, I guess, that's all great. I get what I was asking is if we have plus revenue, 60 grand, if it works out that way. I understand.
So what do we do with the residue?
Yeah, does that just go back to the?
Oh, that would have to go back to the grantor, or they would say use it on a different project.
But remember, we're only getting reimbursed for what we've done. So you'll probably never get into that situation because I have spent this. Yeah, your budget may say this, but you're only going to give me exactly what I can prove to you as to what I spent. Larry?
Yeah, basically, the grant will shrink to its 80% of whatever is eligible at the end, and we'll hold the bag for the other 20, 22%, whatever it turns out to be.
Yeah, we're sort of holding the bag as we go through.
Yeah, but at the end, and then that will be picked up through the Walton Family Foundation.
Well, we're using the Walton Family revenue to offset it as we go. You're right. It's just that we won't wait till the end as we go along.
It goes as we progress.
Right.
Yes. Clear as mud?
Yep, sure.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to J, which is amending 107 to 159 to remove the requirements that improvements, renovations are changing to existing buildings to develop that do not increase. Gross floor plan be required to present development plans. Do you want to explain this one to council formally, please?
Sure. This is just a minor alteration in the existing code as reads currently. Large scale, which is a big planning review essentially, covers anything that's non-single-family residential or duplex, including renovations of existing buildings. And that's kind of uncommon. Normally, planning only gets involved whenever the building expands, because then, of course, certain things may need brought to code. But other than that, typically, you'll see in the city cross comparison that I've listed in there, the four major cities or cities anyway, it is unusual, none of them look at internal renovations, and so I'm proposing to kind of come into more line of like planning practice and just look at the building or existing buildings if they're expanding. So internal renovations, planning typically does not get involved in that at all unless they're, you know, putting a sign up for the new business. So I'm proposing to remove that, strike it, and replace it with just expanding of existing buildings.
It's a cleanup.
It's a cleanup and then getting planning out of places they function.
Any questions? All righty, thank you.
Cool.
Okay, we'll go to item E, approving new service charges for ambulance services. Chief Sims is here. Chief, do you want to add anything?
If there's any questions, okay.
Well, I don't mean to be smart aleck, but the increase is 26.9%. It's not 21%.
That's been six years since we raised rates for the ambulance service, and based off of the study, we're not, that's actually really comparable and still very economical for residents here. I mean, a lot of your services around $1,000.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't surprised. It was a big increase after 2016. Lots happened since then.
So a lot has happened. Fuels went up, you know, we got salary increases and so forth. So this is something we got with our billing company and visited with her a little bit about on kind of an idea what we should do, and she was in the same ballpark on what's going on in the around the area, so.
Yes, but this point is, in your memorandum, you're saying it's a 21% increase?
Yeah, well, that's what, when we originally were going with one, I probably didn't change that one. I'm sorry. We were going to go with a little bit lower number, but we changed it. Kim and I talked about it and changed it to.
Because it really rounds up to 27%. It's 26.9%.
Yeah.
It would have been 21 roughly, but we moved on it a little bit.
Okay.
Just a little bit from there.
Larry?
So with this increase, does that make the operation of that part of your unit, your whole system, fire department, does that make that self-supporting for that side?
Uh, no, sir. Well, for the, depending on what you're talking about.
Well, this is ambulance cost, right?
Yeah, so if you're looking at, if you're separating those costs out like we used to do way back when, we used to separate fuel and maintenance and so forth, then the wages of what the paramedic and N P made. If you're looking at that, it more than supports that, but as far as overall operations now.
Okay.
Well, you send, typically, you send out more than just the ambulance when you have a call.
That's right. We do now. Did our priority dispatching now. We send out additional units based on the call type, so that's what that is.
Any other questions?
Would you say as far as the residents concerned that these increases should mostly be covered by insurance?
Most of it. All depends on, where we're going to see our best, probably our best payers is going to be your private insurance and our Medicare. Medicare is still the highest payer here in the city of Bellavista, but it's kind of changing where you're getting less Medicare and you're getting more of the private insurance. And when you're looking at those fees, you know, Medicare only allows you to collect so much off of the call.
Right.
Well, on the private side, they pay a little bit more on that. So, yeah, most of it is, if you're looking at a high QD call, like an ALS II is a call where it requires a lot of equipment, a lot of resources and so forth. We charge right now $650 for the base rate, and Medicare pays $611 on that. So we had to get a little bit more of a spread out from that, that call here for the private insurance side, basically, on it. Yes, sir.
What, why do the fire department quit servicing Mercy?
What are you talking? I was talking to transfers.
Transfers.
Yeah, it was too much of a strain on the fire department, Jerry. We were doing, that first year that they opened up Mercy, that was one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure our patients were taken care of, our citizens in Bellavista were taken care of, and we're transporting them out of Mercy. And it got to where we were doing, gosh, close to 2,000 call, 2,000 transfers in a year. At that time, that was really taxing our service at the time, so we have a kind of layout. We still do transfers out of there, we just don't do as many transfers out of there.
I mean, I know from personal experience, the fire department service was a lot more efficient than what the service that they use now.
Yeah, and you're probably right. But it was very taxing. You know, we got to make sure we're covering our city the best we can here in Bellavista, and with that, doing that many transfers on top of our emergency calls, E calls, it was really taxing the fire department.
So this wasn't profitable? I mean.
No, I'm not going to say it wasn't. I'm not, if you're saying profitable, I'm not saying.
Profitable was not.
Profitable is just, it was taxing our service. It was taxing our units.
Profitable is the wrong term, I mean.
Yeah, I'd hate to say that. It was.
So we have six ambulances, Jerry, and we could be doing two or three transfers out of Mercy, and something goes terribly wrong in '71 and we need more ambulances.
Right.
It depends where the rest of the ambulances are. They could be out on call. If that's the case, then we have to call Bentonville or Freeman up over the border to come and help us.
Yeah, this year, this year, we're just under, we're making more calls when we're doing transfers, but it's the way that they're coming in, it's a little bit different than the emergency calls coming in a little bit different than a transfer call comes in, in being available for that transfer at certain times. But we're encroaching on 5,000 calls, D service calls, emergency services calls, emergency calls. Somebody picked up the phone, called 911, asked for an ambulance or a fire truck, and that, I mean, we got to be available for that. And of course, since Mercy opened up, we have added staff that kind of helps with that, but on, when those transfers come about, then it really taxes the service, and it can take us a little bit further than what we normally go as well, so.
Thanks.
Anybody else? No case? Chief, you want to stand right there, if you would, please? We'll go to Resolution F. This is a contract with Superior Auto, state procurement contract, 46,392, for the purchase of a Tahoe for the fire department. Chief, what's that? Is that a replacement?
That is a replacement. Replaces our 2008 Tahoe that we have. That will actually go to probably August of next year, so.
Any questions at all? All righty, thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Okay, now we'll go back to the beginning, and item A is an ordinance which you've seen before. This is the third reading coming up, and this is including short-term rental uses within the table of uses. So this has nothing to do with regulations. This is housekeeping to make sure that we have an S T R in the table of uses. If you were at the last meeting here, the table of uses was talked about with C2, what is permitted within C2, for example. So, as I mentioned, this is, this is third and final, so we'll be voting on it. Okay? Okay, the big one. This is regulating short-term rentals. We're starting with the Fowler consensus, and there have been some initiatives, or was, he had a meeting with some of the folks, and Jim, I think you have some amendments you'd like to present?
Yeah, we're not changing the ordinance. We're taking one or two or three points and adding or subtracting from the original, so we're not rebuilding it. And there was four things that the committee recommended, and I will say them tonight, and depending how this gets received by the council, they'll either get passed by the wayside or they'll get incorporated in the Fowler ordinance. Okay? So I'm not rebuilding it. We're just taking the three or four points that the committee recommended, and if they, if it's favorable next week, we'll get them in and then we'll vote on them. If they're not favorable, I just let them go. Okay?
Does everybody have a copy of this?
There should have been one put for everybody at the table, and then there were extras to, for the crowd.
There were two that I received.
One was from Larry.
Right.
He's going to talk about that, and then one was from Jim.
Okay, and the one from the, from the committee, the changes are in red.
So you'll want to see, it says on the top of the front page, proposed was me add amendment. Okay? All right, Jim, you want to take us through it, please?
Okay, the first recommendation or ask was, instead of one year on the permit, they would like to be two years. So instead of having to renew your permit every year, they would like it to be every two years. Now, I was going to ask, Doug has a little problem with that. I was going to ask him about it, but he's not here. Taylor, has he talked to you about that at all? Why he was rather have one than two?
It may, it may be that staff is budgeted per year, the staff that reviews that, but other than that, I'm not sure any other specific things. We don't have any other permits that are two years. All of them are pretty much four months, six months a year, so it would be our first two-year permit. But other than that, the only thing I can think of strategically wise would be that the people that review them are budgeted to be paid per year. I think that was the gist of one of his concerns, anyway.
Anybody got a comment on one to two?
I think, I think perhaps where Doug was coming from is almost all your permits, the maximum extent that you issue for is one year.
That's the longest permit we have right now, is only one year.
That's correct.
Yeah, and so that may be where Doug is coming from.
I'm not comfortable with going with a two-year period, but it's up to what the other counselors see.
Why?
I see no need to go for a two-year period for it. It makes it too long. If you have issues, you can deal with them at the renewal time without having to do action before that. So if there are issues there, then you just don't renew it when it comes up because it may be close enough so you don't have to do anything special. I don't know.
I don't think it's a deal breaker myself.
Yeah, it's, yeah. No, I'm supportive of one year. And two, you know, you're going to have to have a point in time where you're going to have to do like a reset on account. You know, if we're going to set a maximum number of 600, then you're going to have to know, you know, what the number of permits are, you know, every year so we can reset that number. I think.
So you think it is a deal breaker?
I'm a second.
You had everything you wanted, but it was two years, you wouldn't do it?
You know, it's interesting, you know, that you bring that up. You say, "Everything I wanted," right? And I keep, it keeps getting framed as that.
I'm sorry about that. Everything you thought was smarter.
This was, this was put together with planning staff, myself, a special session, another rework with the, with the city council, right? It's true. I mean, you keep, it's amazing how this keeps getting framed up as a, like, me personally, right? I'm not calling it a deal breaker. I say I'm supportive of one year. Makes sense. All the other permits are done within that timeframe. There's not any two-year permit. I don't know, did the permit, it also, this takes away the revenue generated, which helps support, you know, the program if you're going to go every two years. So I know that was a concern of Doug's. I actually have the email somewhere here that he wrote, and I cannot put my hand on it right now. I think maybe this is.
I think you're right. He did mention something.
If you don't change, you don't change the, the application fee, then it becomes a challenge for planning to come out whole in terms of the cost or even close to whole.
Yeah.
Is there any kind of cost? Is there any kind of cost estimate done as to what it's going to cost to administer the program?
Yeah, I believe there was. Again, Doug's not here, so I can't speak to him, but I remember you saying that as part of your machinations with staff, the cost was certainly looked at, not just this, but overall.
Right, the entire thing. You know, the initial proposal was like $500, $450, right? So anyway, this is what he says. No other current city permits are good for two years, and none get cheaper as they apply for the second, third, et cetera. At this ordinance rate of $100 for renewal every two years in the future, I don't believe the regulation will pay for itself. Citizens will be left holding the bag for investors. $50 per year times 600 units equals $30,000. So that was his comment on it.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay? And even if we put two in, okay, when it comes to next Monday, it can still get voted out. So even if we make the recommendation and say, "I'm going to go ahead and we're going to put the two in," because it's a little iffy here, we put the two in, they can still, next week, Monday, when it comes up, we can adjust it again. So even though we're asking and maybe have a chance, it's not set in stone. It could still go the other way. Understand? Yeah, Larry?
For a point of clarification, I'm assuming, Jim, that you're looking at each of these proposals as a single thing, not collectively as a big package.
No, no, each, each one stands on its own.
Stands on its own.
Okay, well, then, that's not what I drafted, so.
That's right.
I drafted it as a comprehensive amendment, so I'll need to split these out into four or five different amendments. We'll need to have separate votes.
Okay, well, if, if they don't get done, you won't have to worry about some of them, right?
Well, we don't know if they get done until they're voted on.
I understand, but if, if I elect not to tell you.
You don't want to bring them forward, then we don't have to worry about it.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Steve, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm wanting to make sure I'm clear on procedure, what happens here. So we're on second reading for the base amendment.
Yes.
Would we be entertaining these amendments, or the base, I'm sorry, the base ordinance? Would we be entertaining these amendments one by one in advance?
No, I'll read it for second.
No, it'll be, these will be amendments offered on second reading.
On second reading.
Okay.
And it sounds like Jim wants to bring each one independently so you'd be.
Or four or some don't make it something else.
So we would vote on each amendment for the sake of modifying the consensus ordinance?
Yeah.
If that's what Jim wants to bring forward.
The fairest way, I think, for, for that is to do them individually because otherwise, if you find one out of five.
Yeah.
They all go down because you can't agree with that. So I think the fairest way is to deal with one at a time. My suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
So Jason, put the two in and work your magic for next week.
Well, are these going to be made as individual amendments, or are they going to be?
Yeah, that's what we just said.
All right, so I'll make an amendment that, that goes from one to two.
Right.
All right, that's one amendment. Okay, got it.
All right. Something else they asked for, when we have all the paperwork, the paperwork's supposed to include, you know, the name and address, your 50-mile person, and the owner of the house. One of the people requested that the owner of the house not be listed by name or address, just phone number. If that person is also the contact person, then the whole work has to show. Like, if you don't have a landlord, per se, or a caregiver, per se, if you have the caregiver, his name goes full-blown. If you not, and then you have to go all the way. If you have a caregiver, the owner just wants to show their phone number, not the name and address, for fear of retaliation and or whatever.
So if there is no caregiver or custodian, then you still get the full-blown?
Yep, you have to go to full road because we're requiring, you know, somebody within X number of miles.
Okay.
So we're really, we're only listing one person, not two? If there's a local point of contact, you're listing them?
Unless they have, unless they have a landlord. If they have a landlord, the owner just wants their phone number listed.
The owner only wants the owner's phone number listed.
Right. If they have a caregiver, well, if they have a caregiver, the owner just wants their phone number. If there's no caregiver, the way the rest of the ordinance reads, you have to have all the information. The only way you get just your phone number is if you have a caregiver or a landlord or anyone to call.
Now, this is the application form information here.
Right, you know, the city will still have it. It just won't be in the house.
If you have two, if you have two people, because of the situation, you'll have two names on the application documents.
Yep.
And what you're saying is that somewhere later in here, one of those names disappears.
If they have a caregiver or landlord.
And where is that? Where's that? What does that?
So we're looking at section 3A and also section 4B.
4B.
Those work together.
Yeah, 4B. So you, you could agree with 3A, but disagree with 4B unless you tie them together.
Well, I think they have to be, or else you're looking at five. So those two are tied together, Jim?
Well, not the way, you know, if, if it has to go that way, I guess it's where we have to go. But we're, we're asking for originally a caregiver and owner. Okay, someone within 50 miles and the owner of the house.
If the owner is, is outside 50 miles.
The 50 miles is relative. I don't know why it's even in there.
Okay. Well, it's there, so.
But if, if I've got a rental house and I'm in charge of my rental house and there's nobody else, then I have to have full-blown on the permit. If I got a rental house and I got somebody who's watching over it for me, that watchover has to have everything. But the owner of the house only has to have a phone number in the house. We'll still have the record at City Hall and on the original permit.
Let me, all right, so let, as, as it's, as reflected on this document, let me read it to you. I think it'll help if we read it out loud, both of them, then you'll hear it in context. So the application requirements for permit, A, the name, address, telephone number and email address of the property owner and the name, address, telephone number and email address of a person who shall serve as a local point of contact, who shall reside within 50 miles of the short-term rental property. So theoretically, those could be the same person.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So then we go over, that's what that, so we go over to 4B. So then we talk about the, the actual printed notice that's gotta be in that structure to notify the people who are staying there. We say the short-term rental shall have posted within the structure in a clearly visible location, the contact information to include a telephone number and address for the local point of contact for the short-term rental, on and on and on. That could be the property owner if they are the ones within 50 miles. So there's not a guarantee that it would not be the property owner in that, the way that I have done it here. If you want to always require them to have an agent.
No.
Okay.
No.
Then, 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 okay, so that, so as it's, as presented here in what I wrote, it still, that would require the property owner to be listed if they are the one within 50 miles.
Correct.
So if you don't want any property owner listed, then I don't.
It's only the property owner who is the point of contact. If they have a point of contact.
Then the property owner would not be listed.
Yeah, just, just their phone number.
Okay, well, I think then that, that does, this does this because they would only, if they live within 50 miles, they would not have to provide a different caretaker, as you call it. So in that case, that person would be within the 50 miles and would be listed. Right? That's what you would want to have happen.
So Mr. Kelly, do you envision section 3A and section 4B as being one amendment?
That would be one, I would, I would put those together as one amendment because they fit together. So that would be, a second amendment would be these changes to three, excuse me.
And 4B.
4B and.
Or 3A, excuse me.
3A and 4B.
Just for what it's worth, I read a couple of other ordinances today and it's more or less written the same way for a couple of other cities. So that's relatively in line.
Could I just clarify also that with the way section 3A is written now, that every property, it says and, it doesn't say, I, I don't, I don't see an if in there. And, and my question is, if the owner of the property doesn't live within 50 miles, are they required to have a local point of contact?
The answer would be is you'd put Mary Doe, if she's the owner. Mary Doe would be the second name, but you wouldn't have to add any of the other information.
If Mary lives within 50 miles of the property. And if she doesn't, then there will be a local contact who does live within 50 miles. So that's still a requirement.
Yes.
Okay.
That's how I would read this.
Okay.
Jason, I guess you can do your magic on that one, too.
Consider it done.
Okay.
So let it be written, so let it be done.
All right, that a boy. That a boy. Okay.
Just don't ask me to turn the river red.
Well, you gotta part it first. Okay, the next one, it would be section 3B, again, it's in red. They would leave in the health department's inspection on the property, but they would like to take off the part that says, the whole section that says that you have to have it pumped every so many years. So leave the first part, go ahead with the inspection, but take the whole second part out, which involves the pumping or proof of pumping and whatever. The reasoning behind that is a number of them have tried to get some of these things done and they're having a hard time trying to find someone who will actually pump the tank, especially if it's older, because they don't wanna be responsible for it collapsing. Another reason is there are so few people who are doing it and the waiting list is very, very long. You know, the cost didn't come up too much, but it's gonna be expensive. But they would like to see the onsite inspection, which is a walkthrough, whatever, leave that in, but take out the pumping every so many years. Now Larry's got something coming that would probably cover part two of that, but I'm only concerned with the part one.
So Larry, you're thinking of something for next year, that it'd be total city regardless of whether it's a rental or not?
Are you thinking about adding something this year?
No, that, my suggestion would be is that we leave the pumping part in, but delete the inspection, which is the second part of that first sentence. Copy of a report of the licensed installer.
License septic installer or.
So this is in the one that you provided early this morning?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's come back to that after Jim's finished.
Yeah, because mine, mine is different than his and.
Well, yeah, I know it is and that's why I said something else may happen to it. So what we're trying to figure out now, we want the first part to stay and the second part to go.
Okay.
So how do we, how do we feel on leaving the one, taking out the pumping for a number of reasons that I just mentioned?
Yeah, I'm not gonna debate the pumping. Everybody has their own separate experience. I called, it's probably been two, three months ago to schedule mine for pumping and I scheduled it like the next week. It was $350 and my neighbor, when she saw I was having mine done, she said, "Well, I'm gonna have mine done, too." And she called and she got it done that quickly also for $350. I'm just saying, so maybe they're backed up right now.
Well, and maybe it depends on how old your system is.
Well, I definitely don't have a metal tank.
Okay, well, see, that's, that's, that's another hang-up. I'm sure there's more metal ones out there than cement or plastic.
And, and quite frankly, if we have them out there, they do need to be replaced because it is a hazard.
So just, Jim, one thing, I thought, I think I know what you meant, but I wanna make clear, this would require, leaving the way you, the way you prefer, that first part, this is gonna require onsite septic systems for properties served by onsite septic systems for wastewater, a copy of a report from a licensed septic installer or inspector. It's not gonna be inspected by the health department. It will be a installer or inspector doing it against health department standards.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Except the installers and inspectors tell me they are gonna have a problem certifying any kind of inspection, especially unless the ordinance specifies what those inspection requirements are.
They're, they're saying that they can't use the Department of Health requirements and say that's good enough? Because that's what we're incorporating. We're saying if it, if it's operational pursuant to health department requirements.
If you remember Mr. Murphy's presentation here for the evening program, they have an inspection program in Washington County that they adopted a number of years ago. There's no criteria in the ordinance of what is being looked at. There's nothing attached to it that provides guidance for it. And so it's kind of a fiasco for them. You go out there and walk around and say, "Yeah, it looks pretty good," and you can write a certification that says it's okay because there's no standards to it. And so Mr. Murphy pointed out that they have an ordinance to do this in Washington County, but it's not effective because it doesn't really, doesn't have any meat in it to provide any results that are meaningful, so. So, and, and what we have here is without some meat in what the inspection consists of, it probably would be similar in my humble opinion.
I've got that work, that Washington County, because that did come up and I wanna go over that with you because the Washington County ordinance. They have to get a permit from the county health department, okay. So Article 2 of their ordinance says that a certificate or permit shall comply with regulations of the Washington County Health Department so as to ensure that the soil is suitable for a septic system and does not, in conjunction with surrounding systems, contribute to a danger to public health or the groundwater, including but not limited to phosphorus levels. The cost of said inspection approval may be collected at closing. And these are, these are done upon the sale of property, so you, you have to get a permit. And so that's the only language it has in there. It just says regulations of the health, county health department. And their, the health department does not have suitable regulations adopted for them to inspect?
I don't know. His verbal statement at the meeting here, it wasn't, and when I met with him before that, he told me the same thing. Without, without some guidance and the program that Benton County had proposed in 2015 or so, they had a whole program. They had a checklist for the inspection and who could do it and all the rest of it. So it had something that would meet in it that you can measure this inspection from that inspection from that inspection and say, "Yeah, okay."
We do have a city ordinance on the books now. I think some of you remember probably, where we say if a septic system is failing and we define a failing system as where water is on top of the ground. Wastewater's on top of the ground. And then there's a notice requirement that we send to the POA and then they have to turn the water off to the property if it's not fixed within a period of time. So that's really the only thing we are currently have in city code regarding the functionality is whether there's wastewater on top of the ground. I don't know if that's, I mean, obviously that's a failing system, but I, I don't know if that's something we could, we need to look at here or cross-reference or, I don't know.
That's what they call the scratch and sniff inspection.
That's right.
I'm not sure you'd have to scratch it, I think you'd just sniff it.
So many feet, if you can smell it, so many feet are good. So what's the council feeling on taking it, leaving it? What?
I, I think, I don't know, because I, you know, we got Larry's today, right?
Yeah, that's, that's not up yet, so that could change.
I think it's maybe, it could be appropriate just to kinda talk because it's a different angle that wouldn't include any of this, his recommendation, and then we could decide.
Okay, so you're saying we let Larry talk and then we decide we go that way, we go this way or we go that way? The original way.
Oh, the original way.
Right.
Okay, so Larry, perhaps you can direct us to your submission then, please?
Yeah, it would be, it would be the same section 3B.
Okay.
And on 3B, you provide a copy of the current permit acknowledging that it can be built or it can be installed. And I've deleted a copy of a report from a licensed installer or inspector certifying that the onsite system on the property is operational within the requirements of the Arkansas Department of Health. So the rest of that sentence goes away. I've left in the proof about the septic tank pumping within two years. I guess Murphy suggested not to do it every year. Question is, is it two years or should it be three years?
Three years is what's written.
Larry, it looks like maybe you worked off of an older version.
No, I took the packet that I got from Wayne and I copied it and pasted it into Word and that's the copy I used.
Well, the current, the current draft says, well, if you look at, you've got Jim's there in front of you. The part that's red and crossed out is the language that's got about the pumping in the current version. And yours is a little different, but though you're willing to keep it.
And I, and I acknowledged that. I, I took the packet from you and I, this, I just copied it and pasted it and then edited it, so.
Would have been wonderful we had when we sent it out the last time.
Well, this time, the packet, that was with the work session.
Right, but that would have been from the last meeting. It wasn't changes.
Okay, so we're only fighting over two or three years, so go ahead.
Yeah, so two or three years, either way, two years I think is sooner than it needs to be, so I don't have an issue with three. Anyway, but that's where this came from, is a copy of that, so.
Does everybody see Larry's? If utilizing an onsite septic, the stroke, a copy of a report through to Arkansas Department of Health, and then he leaves in, in addition, the last sentence. And he's not necessarily stuck on two years. He was saying maybe three, which is the same that was in the other one.
Yeah, which is what's in the, the draft that Jim has here, so three is fine.
Doesn't need a qualification, though, in case it's a new property, you wouldn't expect it to be pumped. It's brand new. Property has to be a certain age in order to require it to be pumped.
That's not what the ordinance, that's not what this says.
Right, why, why would you pump something that's brand new?
Well, it's not brand new.
It, it could be. The home for the short-term rental could be a brand-new home.
Well, but it says if it hasn't been pumped in the last three years. So you could have a home up to three years old before it has to be pumped.
So you're taking out the part, but the five years prior to date of application for short-term rentals? Because if you keep reading down, you get the subject within, unless a certificate of occupancy was issued by the city for the subject property within five years prior to the date of application for a short-term rental, in which case no inspection would be needed.
What section?
That's, 3B is the last three, three, four lines.
I've got, I've got an F in mind. That's what I got from copying it out of.
So basically, a new home is home free for five years.
Okay.
Based on bedrooms and.
That's not what's in Larry's, but that's, that's what ought to be there.
Okay, so what everybody's alluding to is in Jim's 3B that is crossed out, which is in the original ordinance, it says three years for pumping unless a certificate of occupancy was issued by the city for the subject property within five years prior. So it gives a new one. So Larry, would you be willing to put that back in?
I would leave that in.
Okay.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
So we're talking, are we, is it no inspection and a pumping or a pumping and no inspection?
If it's a new property up to five years, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I get that.
Doesn't have to be inspected either?
Larry's saying all you have to do is give a copy of the septic permit, which is issued by the health department at the time that it's actually going in the ground. And after that, there's no inspection by a licensed inspector or anything else. He moves straight to the pumping.
So, so what you wanna do then opposed to what? I wanna take the bottom out, leave the top. You wanna just reverse that, basically?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
So what is the purpose of the permit issued by the health department? I mean, if there has to be a permit, the septic system wouldn't be there. So what's the purpose in providing a copy of that?
Documentation about what's installed at that site. In other words, what kind, how big is the system sized for?
It tells you if it's concrete or steel and it also tells you if it's for a two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom.
Okay.
So, so in your version, do you plan to use that to determine occupancy maximums?
No, it, it says the first, in the first line, "For properties served by onsite systems for wastewater, a copy of the report from the licensed insta-" oh, I'm sorry.
You wanna go to that?
Where are you at?
Don't, don't we require them to provide a copy of the documentation of the septic system installed? I thought that was on there somewhere.
If utilizing an onsite septic system, a copy of the most current septic permit issued.
We took it out. That was an older.
Okay, all right.
We moved to what's in the current.
I'm sorry.
3B, so that's an older, unfortunately an older version, I think somehow it's got mixed in.
And ADH will tell you their stuff is readily available to look up, so I guess we need it submitted then.
Jim, I can do an amendment to be that will put it the way you've got it on this paper here and then I guess they'll be deciding whether they wanna take it out or leave it in, require both or one or the other.
Yeah, well, how do you? Yeah, well, how do you guys feel about the first proposal or the second proposal?
Okay, well, I think one thing, Larry, you need to tie in, Larry, what you wrote on here, page four, because as I said, this is, it's not following exactly, but where you go on the occupancy and limits restrictions.
I can't figure out why, because I just scanned this thing.
Go to occupancy and limit restrictions, under section five.
I've got the packet open for tonight, and what I have here is correct, because the second to the last line in B says proof must be provided that the septic tank has been pumped within two years. That's what it says in the document, it's in your file.
What I can tell you, this, this Wozniak amendment is based on the last approved, this is the consent, the so-called consensus amendment, and then there were two additional amendments, one from Mr. Flynn, one from Mr. Fowler, on some smaller items that you all approved at the first reading, and that's what this is. And then the red marks are what Jim wants to suggest to you. Anything else is, could be one of the January tabled versions, or a prior version of this that has been subsequently changed, but I can tell you that's what this is, and so I don't know.
I can only tell you that I'm looking right here in the screen, and what I have copied is what's in the package, so.
Well, on this whole issue, one of the things I was, I was going to bring up is I wanted the five years, not the three years.
For pumping?
And when it's brand new, five years, brand new. I brought that up a couple meetings ago, and everybody seemed to like it. This says five years.
Yeah, on a new house.
The one on the computer says three years.
That's on a regular, a house that's already there.
The one in the package is apparently the wrong version.
This is allegedly, the one in the packet is allegedly what we're, what we, you know, took off of being tabled.
It's going to have to be modified to make sure.
I like the five years, I like this.
I, I like the five years.
But it's not listed as a change.
So five years on every house, or five years just on new ones?
No, if it's new. But not the last five, I know that.
It's there, it's sitting right there.
It's not in there, that's my point.
We'll have to resurrect the language between my version and what.
We're just going to have to clarify.
It's in this one.
Yeah, I know it is, but it's not in that one, on the computer, which is supposedly what came off table.
Well, the computer's always right, so.
Not necessarily.
Okay, so as Mr. Kelly has said, the Wozniak amendment that you're seeing tonight is a true amendment to the last version. Okay, so let's go back there, Jim, and let me ask you the question. Are you okay with putting any kind of pumping in at all or not? Because that's what it's coming down to.
Yeah, I'm going with the committee's recommendation.
So no pumping whatsoever?
Right.
Okay.
Now, we can change it, because like I said, we can change anything, but I'm going to try to stay with the committee's recommendation.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, Larry's wouldn't include it either, but there's another change in the occupancy and limits in Section 5.
Okay, well, let's wait until we get through Jim's.
You need to take the language that's crossed off on Jim's version here, because it's concluded that mine is the wrong version I'm working on. So the concept was, is to take, get rid of the inspection portion of it, because we don't define it enough to make it meaningful, and that we would keep the part about the pumping as it's written. So that would be, that was my proposal.
But yours should really say pump within three years, and you're willing to put in the five year.
The five years if it's a new, new, new house, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we've got Jim's, which is no pumping at all, and Larry's, which is not requiring an inspection, as Jim's does, but pumping every three unless it's a new and it's a five. Clear as mine?
More or less.
Our citizens don't understand that.
Not, I would think.
Yeah.
All right, Jimmy, got one more?
Yeah, and it's got to do with, you know, how many people per room? And, you know, the state health department and fire code says, you know, like two per bedroom. And they would just ask if we could have the two per bedroom and an extra per bedroom. So if you had two bedrooms instead of four, it'd be six, you had three bedrooms instead of six, it would be nine, and if you had the four bedrooms instead of eight, it would be 12.
Now, you just said two, did you mean three?
Well, yeah, it calls for two, an extra one. Two bedrooms, four people, one per bedroom, that's six. You got three bedrooms, that's six people, one per, I know it's against the code, okay? You get three bedrooms, that's six people, plus one per bedroom is nine. You get four bedrooms, that's eight people, four extras, that's 12. That's what they're asking, we're asking.
It's really three people per bedroom.
Yeah, yeah. But I also went looking through all my paperwork, and that was brought up once before, and it died.
Okay, so this removes the distinction between occupancy, whether septic or sewer, so that it removes that distinction and creates one set of limits, which is the number of three per bedroom. And the number of bedrooms is determined pursuant to the fire code.
Not determined by.
Not determined by the septic permit. And that's where Larry differs as well.
So either we go with the three or we go with the two?
Mr. Murphy said here that night that he was thinking that he didn't have a problem or thought that three would be acceptable.
But does he have the authority to say that?
That's by the septic permit, is what he said that by, not, not an open-ended.
And he's going against his own company, per se. So it's either, you know, what we're looking at, real simple, is three or two.
Per bedroom. Three, four, two, what?
Three, three or two.
Oh.
Three or two, per bedroom. The committee's asking for three, the septic permit statewide is two.
But also a big difference between whether that's based on fire code or septic capacity.
Hang on a minute, that permit deals with the required size of the septic system. That's not necessarily a restriction on occupancy in the building. That has, that's, that's the standard that had to be followed for the building to be constructed and the permit to be granted. This is one of the problems we had. If you recall, back a year or more ago, we had people building new houses, calling these rooms bedrooms, and, and, and listing them with more rooms than the, than the septic permit said. And so we wanted to restrict calling these rooms bedrooms, because they didn't meet the requirements of the building code, and we wanted them to follow fire prevention code definitions. So we adopted an ordinance that accomplished that as it relates to new construction. So now, in terms of new construction, the permits that are on the, the bedrooms that are on the permit equal the number of bedrooms that are on the house unless they put a deed restriction on. You recall all that? So that's on new construction. So the, the, the size of the septic, in other words, the state has never kind of, kind of come in and say, you're over occupancy. They're going to say you got a permit because it met the number of bedrooms on the, on the piece of paper that was submitted to them. So that's not necessarily an occupancy limit in terms of operation day-to-day.
So you're recommending two, and you're saying three, right? I'll tell you, three per bedroom, that is a showstopper for me. If we're going to eliminate the septic conversation, potentially, out of this ordinance, then we have to set occupancy limits. And the typical per, like any ordinance that I've read for practically any city is two people per bedroom. And what Larry's proposing is two per bedroom as determined by the fire code, which will be like our chief building inspector as well determines, or it could be for one of the signs, or the fire department, an actual bedroom, right? And I was willing to, if you will, kind of like make that compromise to take the septic piece out of it, because I, I'm under advisement that there will be a more comprehensive septic ordinance that will be proposed in 2023, sooner rather than later. That will include short-term, long-term, B and Bs, and residential homes. Now, they'll kind of be taken separately, each one of those, right? And I think permanent residential homes, we're not going to go tell people that they have to, I would assume, pump their systems and have it inspected every so many years, but maybe it's going to be more in the, the form of upon the transfer and sale of home, we're going to require like a septic inspection, make sure that tank is okay, because we want to inform a future buyer, right? And also for the future health of the city, the time, at that time, we can determine what's going on. Maybe we'll write something separate for short-term and long-term rentals, et cetera, because they're a little bit different. I would only say, and everybody got this, Septic Tanks: A Future Crisis in Bela Vista was really well-written, Doug Tapsin it out, I read it today, and if I'm a resident of Bela Vista, I read that and I go, I'm concerned. And I will only say, when I read it, the city of Bela Vista, all residents, we are all in this together. Septic systems are and will be an issue here if we don't wrap our arms around it, sooner rather than later. So, because if we take the septic out of these short-term rental ordinance, kind of makes it, and say two per bedroom is defined by the fire code, really kind of makes that more like a typical residential home, right? Takes the septic out, doesn't really treat them any different, and then we'll, we'll, we'll take on the septic issue soon, later. It is a more comprehensive ordinance for the city. So that's where I'm, I'm sitting right now on this, that's what I'm thinking.
And if we do the citywide, regardless of what we do tonight or next week with the short-term rentals, they could end up back with the two, period. If we're going to do a citywide, they, they could end up losing the three. You know, we're going to go back to two, so if they do a citywide ordinance, there's a possibility that they're going to have to revert back to what the fire code says. Could, not that it won't, but there's a possibility that.
We, we also, you know, we, so limiting occupancy on the septic system is one conversation, right? And it's a big conversation. Another part of the occupancy limit is for the life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness for permanent residents, okay? Because this situation of, you know, 10, 12, 14, 16 people in single-family residential home on our, on our streets and in our neighborhoods, to me, is, it's out of order, right? We're not operating like small hotels or sometimes hostels, you know? Whenever you have 12 and 14 people, you're not talking about families coming in and renting those homes. It could be two families or three families, or it could be 10 or 12 or 14 individual people. And that really upsets the people that are having to live where these short-term rentals exist. And I keep, I'm sorry, I keep hearing from more people all the time, and I'm not getting emails necessarily, I mean, I am, or phone calls, but it's just like, I was voting the other day, I get through voting, somebody heard my name, I told my name, I got through voting, can I talk to you when you're done voting? I want to talk to you. Because they've got a short-term rental right across the street from them. And they're just like, look, and, you know, my wife today, she goes to her meeting that she had, let's say, a lady approached her there, hey, I know these conversations, I want to tell you what I'm experiencing on my street. All I'm saying is, it's a septic issue is a big issue, that's one reason to address occupancy. A secondary reason is because our permanent, long-term residents are upset, and they're tired of it, and they want it managed, they want the occupancy.
Sort of, so we don't talk about this, do we're blue in the face? So do we want to take the 3.6 or the 6.9.12 out, and just go with two, or you want to leave it in and worry about what happens after first of the year?
I will, I will go with two per bedroom as defined by the fire code, which will be determined by the chief SIM staff, and they'll have to understand what a bedroom is according to our chief building instructor. Take the septic out and address the septic piece in a larger piece of legislation, if you will, for the city. That will include, because we've talked about long-term rentals as well, we know there's an issue there, we believe there is. So we do a larger piece, all-encompassing, septic ordinance for Bela Vista.
But as far as this goes, you're, you're just going to stick with two?
Yes.
Anybody else, one way or the other?
You know, many, many of our homes, mine included, has a big basement. It doesn't have, it's not, it's like big open space down there.
Or finished.
So will fire code recognize that as a place where I could sleep a couple people?
If it doesn't have a means, I mean, this gets back to, if you've got a window and, you know, alternate means of egress and, you know.
Then it, then it's a bedroom, according to fire.
It could be, but it doesn't necessarily have to be, if it meets the, the requirements.
But if you're sitting on a septic tank that's built for three bedrooms.
We're getting away from septic, though.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, we're getting away from the occupancy based on septic capacity, that's what this, that's what.
So where is the equity here in a short-term rental, a long-term rental?
We're not talking about a long-term, so don't even bring it up. It's later.
That's going to have to be addressed next year, though.
We're worried about it right now, so we're not here till midnight. Do we want to put the three in, or we want to put the two in?
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
The only way y'all are really going to know what you want to do is when you call the roll and vote.
Yeah.
So put the amendments, we'll put the amendments together, you can move to amend, if it gets seconded, y'all have a vote, you'll find out how everybody feels. And then it'll either get approved or not.
So leave the, leave the three, you got two, and so it gets to that amendment.
And then I'll do some for Larry as well, and then y'all will make a decision.
My rationale for the two is that it's consistent with the design basis for this, for the septic system, but on the other hand, is that when we approve building permits for new buildings, it's predicated upon a bedroom having an occupancy of two. And so if you allow three in here, you may be creating a differential between short-terms and people who live here permanently as to how their house is set up.
And let, let me add one other thing, I'm going to state the obvious here. We're on a second reading on this. Unless you all decide to amend it and push it ahead to a third reading, there are going to be two new different members of the city council, which may have different opinions of all of you around this table, and we're going to be right back where we started about what people think about things.
Yeah, we need to end it. We need to end it.
So.
I don't know.
I, just, I, you know, I don't know, this, we, we reached a consensus to end the discussion, it didn't work. We're trying to do it again, I don't know if it's going to work.
Well, we're on, we're on second reading this time. I can't see any good reason, really, why we would break from our typical procedure, suspend the rules, and try to expedite now, when, to your point, I think it's a good thing that we have two city councillors coming on, I think it's important to have their sensibilities about this. I feel like we're still thrashing around quite a bit. I don't feel like this is settling in on any kind of consensus that makes the residents happy, that makes the short-term rental operators happy. I don't think we're close, I really don't. I don't think we're on the verge. You know, I feel, I'd feel good, here, here's where I was going to kind of frame this, in terms of what I would do on, on Monday this week. If everybody came forward and said, this is it, Steve, this represents the best of, of both sides, we're, we're all protected, we all feel comfortable with it, we're all on board, let's make this happen, then I would consider it. I don't feel like we're there. I keep hearing concerns, objections. I don't think we're there yet. I, I still don't think that we're there yet. And procedurally, we do have also, coming back on the table in January, a very streamlined, straightforward approach to regulations of short-term rentals. It comes back on the table in January. It's still there. If we wanted to keep this simple, keep it streamlined, and we want regulations in place, that option is still available come January.
And this can be altered come January. And you think, worried about make everybody happy? Good luck.
I know.
Good luck, that ain't going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen.
Even if you pay one side and don't pay the, it's not going to happen.
No, I agree.
You're going to take your best shot and let it go. If it doesn't work, we can do what we do with every other ordinance that sits out there, we can redo it. We can redo it. But we need to have someplace to start.
Did anybody see that interesting article in the Gazette, I believe it was today, about Fayetteville and Springdale considering their short-term rental ordinances and the enforceability?
Yes, they're going to put it into a third party.
They're enforceable, it's just they're going to have somebody else.
Okay, Jason, go ahead and do your magic, put 3.6 or 6.9.12 in there, and we will mess with it Monday.
Okay, there could be more than three bedrooms in a house, so you, what if it's a four-bedroom house? There'd be 12, if it's a five-bedroom house.
If they can do that, they got five bedrooms that are legal.
So you're, it's two, you want to do just three per bedroom?
And then we can beat it up Monday.
Okay. That's Jim's. I understand, too.
Yeah, well, I just totally.
I'll work with, I'll work with Attorney Kelly to get my raw document in the right form.
Larry? I have, I know this is already complicated, but I have two things to bring up. One of.
One of them is, and I brought this up a couple months ago, and I had the impression people were amenable to it, but sometimes I get the wrong impression. I proposed a deal where if you were an owner and you lived in Bella Vista, in other words, you're a resident owner, and when we go to sign up for STRs and there's only so many, you'd get a head start, you'd get 30 days or 60 days or something. Because I was afraid of local people getting beat out by California corporations or something.
That's in section nine.
It's in there now?
It's in there.
Okay, good.
That was a brute.
Now, the second thing I have, new, it's a little more complicated, a resident brought it up to me, and I think it's a really good point. This is what it is. So you're sitting here and you're about to, I'm going to build a house and make it a short-term rental, it's going to be really nice, and it's on sewer, and its location, none of the other houses around it, it's right by the park, and it costs a lot. Well, you're afraid to build it, because what if you build it and then the 600 are gone, or whatever number we choose? So I think we need to have a mechanism where if you want to build a brand-new place to be a short-term rental, that you can apply and get one of those 600. And then you have to make some kind of rule, you have to start construction in three months and, and be done, and not, you know, pick some reasonable time. Because otherwise, nobody would be willing to build a brand-new place and make it a short term, because you can't take the risk. You're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then that bill...
I'm aware of your situation, I'm definitely wanting to entertain something on that.
Yeah.
Well, my, my last adjustment is in section 7C. And what I've done there is to try and protect the people that we've identified as having and owning short-term rentals. And so what I've proposed there is, short-term rental properties as confirmed by the A and P committee as of November 21, 2022, shall be given preference in counting towards the maximum number permitted.
I don't know what that means, Larry, I don't, I don't know how in the world we're going to do that.
Well, the language you, we may have to work on to figure it out.
But how do, how do you prefer them in the count?
Prefer them in that you don't issue a permit to someone who's not on this list until you've issued all of these permits before you process it.
So you're going to have somebody wait six, eight months, till all of the current ones get registered before you let this guy come in with another one?
Not necessarily.
Well, that's what you're saying, you want to keep all these spots open for the current ones, which is fine, I don't have a big problem with that, but someone who wants to build one, you're going to tell him he's got to sit back and wait till X number of days, months, or years, till everybody who's currently out there puts their two cents worth in? And what happens if somebody doesn't want to and they're not going to bother to tell us that we ain't going to go?
Well, if it's not on the list that we have confirmed it as a short-term rental property...
Right, and I understand that.
That's my, because we say short-term rental properties as confirmed by the A and P committee. Are you all in the business of confirming Airbnbs?
No, we don't even have a list yet, so where are you going to go?
Okay.
And we, we have, it's like, we, we have a list, right? Right now, I'll tell you right now, the, the number's like 493, okay? We have addresses for 443. So we have 50 that we don't. So Granicus is always going to kind of be working a little bit in arrears, because they have to, first they have to find them through advertising, right? And then they have to find them with their recognition software, then they have to reach out, go to the county, and blah, blah, blah. So we're always going to be behind on that a little bit, we're never going to be absolutely current.
So what this would say is that the 443 are confirmed, because you have an address relating to the property.
They're not confirmed till they reapply for a permit. We have nothing yet to make them apply at all. So they're not confirmed till they start to process. Then, once they start to process and it takes six months, well, they're okay, because they're in the process. But how long are you going to wait for those 447 to start to process if you want to be 490 and you have to wait till 447 apply or don't apply before you can?
No, no. Just a second, Mr. Kelly.
I'm, I'm just thinking, I probably, but are you saying that the, that the ones that exist today don't count against the 600? Is that another way of saying that?
No, they count against the 600, but they don't get pushed out because a hundred of them come in.
But what do you mean by pushed out? That's what I don't understand.
You have 100 owners that come in and say, I want a short-term rental approval on this property.
Right.
And we have not seen them listed anywhere, they've not shown up anywhere, maybe it's a new building that's going in, under construction, it may be a whole, a whole series of things, but we don't, but it's not indicated anywhere as one that we know about.
They're applying for a permit but don't have a place for that permit, don't have a, a actual physical address for that permit.
So, so you don't get, what you don't do is you get the stamping to the door, because we want to get an STR for our property, but we haven't done it yet.
So you're, that's, this is what Mayor Lect was saying about having people who are going to build...
Yeah.
But those would not be in place on November 21 of 2022?
Correct. No. And all I was trying to relate to is that we have a list of properties we know about. So that list of 443, as an example, would have some preference in terms of ensuring that they get a permit. As opposed to all of those who rush through the door and say, I want to get in before I get to 600.
They want a permit for a vacant lot.
Right, yeah, or whatever.
Okay, well, that's going to require more of the rewriting and just that.
It may need more language than what's in there, but that was the intent of it, is that...
Well, then that, that actually may not ever even end up being a short-term rental, we never know.
Yeah, exactly right.
That's kind of like zoning, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know.
I think we beat this up enough, he's going to rewrite the four things, we're going to bring them up individually, we need to go on, because we can sit here and talk forever and not accomplish a thing.
Okay, so if you'll work with Mr. Kelly, please, John...
I've got it.
He's got it.
Okay. John, do you want to work with Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, on that one, I agree.
On that one that you mentioned? Larry, what do you have to down there?
I, I'm going to work with Mr. Kelly to get the right form to start with, and then get the wording right for the forms.
I think what happened, looking at the, at the packet, that was the ordinance that was in last month's agenda, but you all adopted an amendment to that, and so that replaced everything, and so, and then the replacement is what I made these changes off of, so we need to get that switched, so.
We'll adjourn, okay?
We're not adjourned, we've got the rest of the thing to go through.
Oh, okay, well, one last point before we move on. Well, we got the calendar, right?
Right, well, there's more.
Okay. Just want to make a point, and we'll talk about it next week, just don't forget, we're talking, and, and really, we're not even at 96% yet. Well, we may be close. I mean, 4%, 4% of the homes, that's what the 600 is based on, basically 4% of the homes involved this day. Letting the, the tail wag the dog here, okay? We represent the 96% of the homes, and I'll tell you right now, I know we have a lot of short-term rental owners that live here in Bella Vista right now, not showing up, they're not saying anything, that I think they probably got their heads in their hands and going, oh my gosh, we're getting a black eye over this, or, or, you know, all this stuff that's going on, and we're really doing the right thing. Just don't forget that we represent the 96% mostly, and actually, probably more than that. And to keep, let this keep dragging on and on and on, it's ridiculous. Really, this should have been done a long time ago.
With what we're proposing, which should be done Monday. Should be done Monday.
Can I ask one question, Jim? Because I saw it, was there any desire to go up from 600 to something? I saw something in the paper that said that your committee was talking about going to 700 or something?
They threw 700 around and I said, even at 600, we can adjust it, just like we can anything else.
But right now, you intend for it to be 600? Because I didn't put that, okay.
Yes. Because it can be adjusted, just like that, one meeting.
All right, Jerry?
At one time, there was some talk about exclusions, about exemptions, like for instance, the greens. There's nothing, I don't see anything here about...
It's a whole different ballgame.
So what we did, in the definition...
Different can of worms.
We say, for purposes, section one, short-term rentals shall not include properties or units subject to timeshare arrangements or properties in commercial zones served by sanitary sewer. So that was the, that was meant to solve that issue you were talking about.
That gentleman here that night said that the majority of those places were not timeshaired any longer.
But there's still a commercial outfit that's on a sewer?
Yeah, because there's 50 owners per, per place if they're timeshaired.
Yeah, 52.
Yeah.
Some of them are...
And they're all on septic, so it's really not a big problem.
Every single week of the year, but they're still...
Yeah, on sewer, yeah.
On sewer, that's not a problem. Next, Mayor?
Okay, everybody okay to move on? All right. Let's go to resolution C, is the meeting calendar for next year? Are the dates okay?
Yep.
Anybody not like the dates?
Same structure as...
Same place, same channel, yep. Okay, the next one?
I need to, because the resolution itself, I want to be full clarity, does not say where the meetings will take place, nor the times, it just has the dates on it.
So what's happening to the council chambers insofar as the new structure that...
This is, this is under lease for what, two more years, three more years?
Yes, but this will be all taken apart, and so we'll be meeting out of the public...
You'll be moved into the new one once that's...
And that date is unknown at the present time.
So we would, the anticipation is we would move to the new courtroom?
Yeah.
Get to drive a little farther in the dark.
At the present, sorry, in the short-term, it'll be here, and it'll continue to be on the same calendar unless it's adjusted, as we've had to do because of statutory holidays that happen, and to be at the same location and time, then we'll have to adjust and move. Okay? All right, the next one is something we do every year, authorizing budgetary transfers. This is to help Kim to actually close the books, so if she has to move some funds from one department to another, she has the ability to do it without coming all the way back here and asking for it, because we're trying to close what we have to close at the end of February. And so we've got two months to close the books. This is something that we do each and every year. I think last year, we gave you a listing of those that we did, because some of you wanted to see it. We can do that again if that's, if that's your desire.
They'll do.
Yep, okay, so just keep track of what you're doing.
So, so do we need to do this now, or do we need to do this in January?
Because I don't...
Okay, I'm sorry?
Do we need to do this now or in January, because we'll know all of them in January, won't we not?
Not necessarily.
No, no, not necessarily. Believe me, bills start keep, keep coming in, even in, in February, even though we're asking all the vendors to get them in, well, yeah, there was one in May, too. So, but if you'd just track back and forth, please?
Okay, all right. I think you might have done that in 21, because I didn't do that last year, so maybe, I'll look and see if I can find something, but I don't think we had any last year.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, so...
Okay. We've done E...
H, you're only one left.
Okay. So you remember we passed a resolution last month to satisfy... This is the same thing now for highlighted national recreation trail on federal maps. So if you want to take one and pass it along, this is an email that Emily put together.
Mayor, do I be excused? I've got a commitment that's been 48 years in the making, but I need to...
That's your wedding anniversary, you better go.
Yeah, and you ain't going to McDonald's. Or, or the next year will not be very happy.
Cindy will be a happy camper, you missed out on it.
Congratulations on 49.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Well, we need to congratulate her.
She's not there to do that.
I know. Well, she could be in the parking lot.
Or give her condolences, whatever.
What I was told to do. Don't ask any questions, just do it.
All righty, have fun, Jerry. Okay, so this answers some of the questions that I think some of you have asked...
Thanks, Kevin.
...as to why we're doing this. It was interesting, because when John and I were at, at regional planning last week, they were talking about two different highways, Highway 51 and Highway 251, one comes down from Springfield and links up with parts of the Metfield Connector and comes back down into Boeing Springs, and then goes south. Another one comes from Joplin and comes down, it's going to be quite, it's going to be quite a sight to see. I have maps in my office if you're interested. But this is putting together a letter of support. I can't remember if she drafted it and put a copy of it in here?
I don't believe it was...
Said it's attached, but I don't...
It's not attached, but she says it is.
Whatever.
No, it's here, it's to, it's to Mr. Peter Bonzel, National Recreation Trail Program Coordinator in DC, offering support. And this is also being done by Bentonville, Fayetteville, Johnson, Lowell, Rogers, and Springdale, because we're all part of the Razorback Greenway Alliance. So if you have any questions about this, please get in touch with Emily over at CES. Okay. I don't have anything listed for discussion, we've probably discussed, discussed, and discussed anyway. But if anybody wants to talk about anything, this is your time to bring it up.
Yeah, just on that last issue, I want to make sure, there's our resolution, which I have drafted, and then there's this other, says Resolution of Bella Vista, but that is, that is a form they wanted us to follow, that is, and then the letters behind that, so we need to take that form resolution out, really, because that creates some confusion. I said that, that went with the letter, but they, I just want to make sure the page before that is the actual resolution.
Yes.
Wait a minute, excuse me. It's, it's got left out, it's not there.
No, it's not there, it's only the, it's only the letter.
All right, we'll have to add that to the packet, it's not there.
Two attachments to this. Okay, there was a meeting scheduled for tomorrow for the committee, it has been canceled, you saw everything that's going to happen now, it doesn't make any sense to meet tomorrow, because what's going to show up Monday is it. It'll get voted up or down. It doesn't make any sense to change anything, it's just almost too late. So we were going to meet tomorrow, we're not going to meet tomorrow, we'll just throw it on the table, see what happens Monday.
Okay, anybody have anything else they want to add?
I apologize for using the wrong version.
It's okay, we'll get used to it.
Mr. Kelly, you have anything?
No, I've spoken enough.
Okay. Thank you, we're adjourned.
You're welcome.